One-minute warning. Do I give them a one-minute warning?
I have no idea.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Seeing quorum, the chair opens the June 1st, 2022, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, here in McCoyet Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Just want to let everybody know, there's a copy of the meeting packet on the front table, and there was a sign-up sheet if anybody wants to sign up for public comment. I now invite you to stand and join with me in the recite of the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Next order of business is the approval of minutes of May 18th, 2022. Any comments on the minutes?
I make a motion we approve the minutes.
All those in favor approving the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next thing is under new business. It's consideration of the adoption of the Select Board Policy 81, participation at public meetings. So, I hope that everybody had a chance to read them. It's a lengthy document, but I thought it was revised recently, and I thought it was very good. What I'm hoping for is it will be accepted by this board with any reference to a three-minute limit on public comment struck.
So, you would need a motion?
Yes, should I go over how I would, if you have comment, John?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what changed. Do we know what, I didn't see a copy of the previous, so I don't know what changed between the previous one and this one.
That I don't know. They revised this on May 23rd, 2022.
Yeah, I saw that.
That's what we got, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't know, it said it was revised. I don't know what was revised from the old...
Add a little clarification on somebody, just a little more clarification during body of it, I think.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
In Roman numeral four, public comments on agenda items, we are just changing that language, and you can, you know, write this in as you wish. The chair may allow public comment on a specific agenda item, period, strike other than comment from a person with a particular interest in a said agenda item. Here, strike that. The comment time for each such person shall be generally be limited to such duration deemed appropriate by the chair. So, strike the three minutes. And the other change is on Roman numeral five, public comment segments of meetings. The third sentence will read, "Comments for the public shall be brief," as opposed to striking, "Comments from the public shall generally be limited to three minutes for each individual." Those are the only changes on this document. Thank you.
And then we'll just title it Town of Mashpee Planning Board. No, then we'll just change it, you know, Town of Mashpee Planning Board, Policy, Public Policy, Policy on Public Participation at Public Meetings.
If somebody has said a good thing, can it go longer than three minutes?
That's why I want to strike the three minutes. I don't want the timer.
Yeah.
The Board of Selectmen, God love them, they have a timer now.
I don't want to go too long.
Right. Right, well, we always did good with that.
Yeah.
Just asking people to wrap it up.
If you say generally three minutes, then you can go on. But if you eliminate three minutes entirely, then how are you going to stop something?
Yeah, that's, okay.
So, there's no control to say, you take it out quick?
Yeah.
I'd like to try it, just, I've never had any problem with asking people to just wrap it up.
If they start repeating themselves, though.
Right.
You know, like, another person gets up and starts repeating themselves, and you say, yo, you have three minutes or two minutes, that person, and then that, you can shut them up, then.
Well, and there was some language in here around repeating comments and that stuff.
Try not to repeat what somebody else said. If you call it a group, try to consolidate.
I just wanted to put it on the record, like a...
So, I take a motion to accept this policy for the planning board as amended?
Don't be.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Anyone abstaining? Thank you. Okay. Next up is, so from this point forward, this body will have general public comment at the end of the meeting. This chair will ask for public comment on each item. Now, this is for public meeting agendas. Public hearings, of course, are different. Public hearings, the chair must have public comment, except public comment from the public. But for tonight, you see, there's no public hearing. It's just a public hearing, and it's generally, in Massachusetts, accepted that it's up to the chair to accept public comment or not accept public comment at public meetings. So, this chair is going to accept public comment on individual agenda items and on general items at the end. In particular, at the end, if you have something that you'd like the planning board to discuss as an agenda item, that is a perfect time to bring it up, is in public comment at the end of our meetings. That way, the board has some time to kind of be aware of an upcoming agenda item. So anyways, our next item is the local comprehensive plan, updates with Weston Sampson and our staff, Town Planner Evan Leir. And I am going to allow for public comment kind of after we have our report from Weston and Sampson, and Evan, and some questions from the board. So, I'd like to recognize Weston and Sampson.
Oh, sure.
Sorry. My bad.
Where are we going to stand?
You should have me here, Evans. I want to set that up for you.
I know, yes, I know.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. You've been here all day?
We have.
Great.
It's early this morning. Evan, I don't know if you want us to do the presentation first, or if you want to go over your portion first.
I have two assessments of two chapters I wanted to present to you, or at least discuss with you. We can do that first, or after the presentation, Weston and Sampson?
So, that will fall under preliminary assessment of the 1998 action plan?
Yes.
I think that's on the agenda in that order, so why don't we start with that?
Sure. So, I've provided in your packet two documents. Again, I tried to focus my initial assessments of the chapters from 1998 on the larger and scope denser elements that constituted transportation, coastal resources, economic development, land use and growth management. I've been able to produce two memos relative to transportation and open space, with the caveat for the open space chapter and recreation, it does not include an assessment of the 2007 open space chapter, or update, that I need to do separately. Coastal Resources Staff, or excuse me, Natural Resources Staff was on vacation from Memorial Day, so I have not been able to sit down with them to produce the document like you see with transportation. The transportation chapter is, the full assessment is complete. I have mapped out that review. And, you know, in a nutshell, the vast majority of the short and midterm actions defined in the transportation chapter were generally accomplished, with a few exceptions, generally with, you know, projects along Route 28, that's a state-owned highway. Our ability to drive those projects forwards are much more limited. Really, what I assess in this overview is I went through every action defined in the short and midterm plan. Gave you some context as to what was accomplished, if it was exactly consistent with the report, with the plan itself, I noted that. If there was a deviation for some reason, I tried to note that as well. And boiled down to essentially an assessment of the long-range plan. And the long-range plan for transportation in Mashpee, as defined in the 1998 comp plan, adequately deals with bicycle and pedestrian amenities, bicycle and pedestrian accommodations in roadways, and furthermore seeks to work towards an ultimate build-out configuration of Routes 28 and 151, and as undivided two-lane roadways. It's very unlikely that that outcome is going to occur, given that 28 is a state highway and 151 improvement project is underway, and does not include two-lane highways.
Right.
Generally, what I've noted in this memo to you is that I think when we go through transportation chapters and we have discussions with the community about the ultimate build-out configurations of our transportation network, we should not be encouraging the widening of roadways. Generally, it just encourages more driving, does not solve congestion issues, at least in the long term. So, that was really my big takeaway, is that I think we need to reevaluate, along with the community, that long-term action plan, and seek to undertake actions that reduce the amount, that disincentivize more driving. And so, that's what I've noted in this memo. I did also assess what I think should be actions that have not been accomplished but should carry over into the new plan. A lot of it pertains to intersection improvements on items that weren't specifically contained in the five-year or 10-year action plans. They often are referencing additional bike path amenities, sidewalk connections, enhancing and making those connections in our sidewalk and street networks that currently aren't connected in any substantive way. So that, I mean, that's really the totality of the review. This takes a substantial amount of work going through the, each element, and so I'm hoping at subsequent meetings, I'm going to continue to make these reports to you and field questions about the 1998 plan, and find those opportunities for action items that are still relevant, pertinent, and may want to carry over in the actions that the community defines for us, because again, we do want to make sure we're carrying over policies and objectives and actions if they're supported by our community engagement activities. And so, that's really what I tried to highlight for you, and I'd be happy to answer questions about them.
The question I had, I've been watching the traffic lately and stuff, there's nothing we really can do about it. It's a two-lane highway. We got 151, two-lane, 28, two-lane, 130, two-lan, no, that's, yeah, two-lanes. Even if we widen around the car, man, it still get a bottleneck when you get to Bathville or Falmouth, and that costs worse traffic jam.
Yeah, we're, the transportation's a network. It's a system, and unless modifications are made in the entirety of the system.
Right.
Widening often will result in a temporary reduction in traffic and congestion, but it just incentivizes more driving.
Yeah.
So, often, the widening of a roadway is counterproductive to its intent.
Yeah.
So, it's a very expensive endeavor to widen the roadway, and you're not making any substantive progress on reducing congestion, while also having the negative externality of making it less safe for people walking or bicycling.
Right.
Or using the roadway in some other fashion than in a vehicle. So, that's what I noted from the transportation element.
We could do some turnouts, like up near the church. That should have been done when they did that road the first time, so you're not stuck behind somebody waiting to go down drive Fisher Road.
Yeah. You know, additionally, the 98 chapter was essentially built completely on a report that was issued to the town as a consultant, a transportation consultant by VHB, who identified a number of potential interventions and solutions to intersections, street scape improvements, et cetera, et cetera. And that report is what identified the ultimate build-out configurations of the rotary, because it also dealt with the rotary, which I hadn't mentioned yet, which was supported by the Mashpee Rotary Study, and the town's interest in retrofitting the rotary with the potential for moving to modern roundabout in future years. That's what the plan says as well. So, that, those activities are supporting what the town had planned for in the past, but a reassessment of those two primary arterials, I think, is what needs to deviate in the transportation element. And it's my recommendation that any policies relative to transportation should be those, especially as we're dealing with moving goods and services and people through Mashpee, and enhancing neighborhoods, it should be about reducing the number of cars on the road where possible, because we're not going to have an impact in the entirety of the system.
Right. I was thinking another thing, like up in Southport and Mashpee Crown, they should have like a little bus service, that like at nine o'clock, we're going to go to a road truck, and start to show up. That would relieve probably a lot of cars just to drive that little way.
The plan does, the 98 plan also does contemplate public transportation, and it links a lot of the public transportation enhancements around the expansion of Mashpee Commons, and identifies Mashpee Commons' growth as the funding mechanism for like a public transit center, et cetera. And so, those crossings, they say, I think, regional solutions that we need to collaborate with Ripta, not Ripta, excuse me, Rhode Island, with Cape Cod RTA, and, you know, kind of regional solutions with our neighboring towns on, because it's a flag service, and people are getting off at unsafe portions of roadway and having to cross highways. So, if we widen those roadways, it'll be even more dangerous for them to cross.
Anything going on in Falmouth, or Shiloh, Yanos, or Sanrus that we will have to deal with on their roads?
I'm not sure at this time, but I think the plan also in 1998 calls for, you know, regional collaboration in these issues, and even a joint transportation committee.
I was thinking more like private companies, like Southport hires like a bus company, that stationary two buses.
It would be great, but you know, we can't compel Southport to do that. We can encourage it.
I mean, if we're trying to relieve traffic, we can suggest it, I guess.
But, you know, after a very lengthy review and putting that document together, I mean, that's essentially the extent of the report.
Yeah.
And so, I'm happy to answer any additional questions you have.
So, Dennis, Karen, do you have any?
On Great Neck Road North, because I walked, we used to walk down, pardon me, that road to the commons, but it feels unsafe. That is not a bike path, is it, that pathway on the...
They refer to it as a shared-use path.
Okay, it's very dangerous.
There are, I run on it all the time. And so, there are portions that have a decent separation from Great Neck Road, and some portions that are right up on Great Neck Road. I know exactly the sections you're talking about are that are less safe. And what I was kind of getting at, in identifying much of the action items contained in this plan as a result of a VHB technical report that was done in the mid-'90s, it might be worthwhile as an action item in this updated plan to evaluate some of the suggestions from that report, and create new solutions for enhanced safety for bikes and pedestrians, and opportunities for allowing for continued flow of traffic that don't require 100-foot layouts on 151 and 28 and be widened to two lanes each. It is not best practice to do that. I think there was a, it was in vogue, if you will, road widening happened everywhere, and people felt like it was going to be great, but it really just was detrimental to connectivity of neighborhoods and bicycle pedestrian safety. And so, we had a discussion this morning, actually, about vehicle speeds. And as long as we continue to design roadways that are highways, you can put up any speed limit sign you want, but people are going to drive fast if it's designed to handle high-velocity traffic. So, one of the action items in the comprehensive plan from 1998 called for amendments to our rules and subdivision rules and regulations to define alternative street types, and traffic calming measures by way of design is another opportunity for that. Widening roadways is not the answer, but often creating the visual, the visual that a road is narrower, or if it's actually less wide, you reduce traffic speeds. So, those are the things that I gleaned as the most salient in that transportation chapter. This chapter was very well organized, as compared to some of the other chapters. Going through these reviews, I found some general inconsistencies in the format of the elements, which has made reporting on them somewhat challenging. So, as we define in this updated plan what an action plan will look like and develop an implementation plan, I think we should work together, the board should really decide on a consistent format and framework for that implementation schedule, and define the roles and responsibilities of the appropriate staff and town hall to accomplish those goals. They're, again, they're generally consistent, but there's a lot of inconsistencies in formatting that makes them a bit challenging. So, that's another takeaway that I had, is just in how we approach implementation.
Karen, you all set?
Yes.
John, do you have any comment?
Just what, what's the plan for the things that are listed as not completed during this updated review, if they still, I guess if it, if the public still says that's an issue, it'll go into the new plan. If it doesn't, it won't.
Can you point one to me? Because again, this was an assessment of what I knew as a VHB director.
Under the 10-year outlook, 10-year intersection improvements, down the two at the bottom of that table, left turn lane, Great Neck Road, Old Barstool, Ryan's Way, not completed?
Yeah, so these are, I put not completed there. I had conversations with Catherine Lunt about these. This would require additional layout width in these portions and create dedicated turn lanes. They have not been done, and they haven't had money appropriated to them, but they're not necessarily imfeasible, so they could carry out.
Well, it may not be, I mean, based on the listening that we're doing now, it may not be an issue. I guess my question would be, what do you do with it?
Yeah, I think, that's why I think in a thoughtful action, or something that is tangible in a relatively short term, is to assess the, these particular issues, either with a technical report from an additional consultant in future years, or whatever.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay, Rob?
I'm good.
Okay. My only comment, and then I'll see if the public has anything to comment on this, but it's Route 151. When people have to take a left on Route 151, there's areas that are speedways, and very dangerous. I met a person who actually was in a terrible car accident there, right? You're getting out and you're taking a left?
Yeah.
Or whatever, you go, you know. But it might be nice, since we have beta group, right, is, it might be nice to have at least some general things that can be done for major roads that are speedways, you know. I know, probably don't have the money or the time to do a study on that part of Route 151. The other thing is, I know the Cape Cod Commission, I don't even know if they call it still Transportation Department or what, but they usually keep a pretty good list of problem intersections and areas in each town, and we should just make sure we know what they've identified as problem areas in terms...
30 is one of the rest one.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, that's kind of, that intersection was obviously noted in the 1998 plan for a modern roundabout, which is in preliminary design phase. So, I mean, that was, what, 1995, approved in 98, so these things do take time to achieve ultimately build-out configurations, but it is being dealt with.
I don't like roundabouts.
No?
No, and that was, Tom Fadella was the one crazy about roundabouts. On the board, nobody knew what roundabouts were, and we went and looked, they finally built one, and I don't see how they really help, like right here.
Well, roundabouts have the effect of slowing traffic to a point that is a safe speed, while allowing the volume to continue to move through. That's why at an intersection like this, that has significantly high volume and congestion challenges, it makes some amount of practical sense. But they do have the, you know, consequence of being difficult to navigate as a pedestrian or a motorist, or someone who wants to walk around town center, right?
You know, a truck comes, and they go right over it. You know, they're made that way for the trucks to go, but I watched the trucks, they can't really make that sharp turn.
I really like Formula One, so I like to take my Prius, really, if I had to get around fastest, you know.
So, before I ask for, you know, some public comment on this, did you identify anything in here in transportation that would be a good question for our survey or our visioning sessions?
I haven't, I didn't specifically, you know, go through these chapters with that goal in mind.
You do in your open space analysis. You do start saying, well, the town has to decide this or that. So, I think it got me thinking that maybe as you're doing your assessments, you should, you should say, that lingering question about, do we want 151 to be a four-lane highway?
Right, actually, well, we did discuss that.
That might be a nice survey question.
We did discuss that today. We went through the 2011 survey in some detail today, and I've contemplated this. I think the challenge is this, right? It is bad practice to widen that roadway to four lanes.
Yeah.
So, I don't want to suggest to the community that it's a good idea, if that makes any amount of sense.
Yes.
But to your point, I think we can certainly consider my findings here in consideration for appropriate questions to ask in that survey.
And real quick, does anybody from the public have any quick comment about transportation here in town? Lynn? So, I just want to let, I also want to let everybody know that this meeting is being videoographed and photographed. I forgot to say that at the beginning of the meeting. And if you do have comments on anything that we discussed tonight, please contact Evan Leir, our town planner.
I didn't speak very loudly, so I don't need a microphone.
But people at home won't be able to hear you, so I don't know if you want to just pass the mic.
Lynn Barbie Surf Drive. Long ago, I remember there being some comment about the possibility of a left turn lane going into, going to the transfer station off of 28, because that is a place where also traffic can get blocked off, so either, I don't know if there's a way to do that, but I remember there was some conversation about that, of being able to make, as you're heading towards, if you're heading east on 28, being able to have a left turn lane into, to go into the transfer station. And the other thing I want to say is, please, please, please don't make a roundabout here, because there would be no way to get across the street. Thank you.
They do have a left turn lane on Archibald.
Carolyn, I'm going to see if you will pass that back to another person. Thank you.
28, when you run 28.
Thank you. My comment is that I think you need another look at slowing the speed limit on 151 and probably 28, because it is ridiculous to have a 50 mile an hour approach to town, especially since you come from a light 50 miles an hour. to town, especially since you come from a light 50 miles an hour, you know, it's not a very big distance. And if you look at the scientific studies on speed limits, you'll see that when it's slowed down, traffic moves better. It actually moves faster, because people can come in and out more easily, since it's not a speedway, and people will let you in. And if you want some references, I have them.
Yep, I wholeheartedly agree with you, Marge. I mean, slowing down traffic is critical. My only point is that speed limits, or posted speed limits, don't necessarily have the tangible impact that they would if the roadway design was such that it helped to reduce the speed of.
True, but you could also enforce the speed limit.
Certainly.
I don't see any enforcement really going on for speeding, and I'm a person that has to take a left onto Route 151 near the fairgrounds. It's, in the summer, it's really almost impossible.
Yeah, yeah.
That's hard there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. That worked out good. So far, so good. All right, did you, if we're ready, we can move on from the transportation element?
Sure.
Did Weston and Sampson have anything?
No.
Okay. So, the next one was, oh, we've done, we have two. The other one is open space.
Yes.
If you want to bring us through that?
Sure. So, in 1998, in the 98 comp plan, it dealt with open space, recreation, agriculture, wetlands, wildlife, and plant habitat. It was, it was pretty huge.
Pretty broad, yeah.
So, and again, there's a 2007 open space plan, so I need to also go through that as well, because it's going to bring us closer to the present time. But I wanted to stick with the 99, 98 elements for now. And so, again, they started with the visions for each of these chapters. So, the goals are to preserve at least 50% of Mashpee's open space, meet the needs of residents of varied ages for passive and active recreation, preserve and enhance local agricultural activities, and to ensure that prime agricultural soils are protected from development or degradation. So, I did put some questions in here, because I actually think there's some less technical items, and there are new existing conditions that I think we need to think about in terms of the long-range plan. But as you all know, Mashpee has done a phenomenal job in protecting and preserving.
Yeah.
There are some highlighted yellow sections in my tables that I put in here that I was not able to discern if any action has occurred. My assumption is that they have, but I just need to follow up with the conservation agent, or perhaps my predecessor, to ask as to the status of those projects. But ultimately, the town has done an exceptional job in achieving the short and midterm actions as defined in 1998. I'm going to assume 2007 as well, because there are very few priority conservation parcels that have not yet been acquired by the town with some sort of partnership. But ultimately, the questions that I had as we were going through this is, you know, the question, the goal is to preserve at least 50% of Mashpee's remaining open space at that time. So, the question I have now is, what is remaining? And is preserving 50% of what is remaining today still a goal in consideration of current priorities and current needs, such as housing? And lastly, the one thing that I just think is, and I might get some anger for this, but it's the conversation around preserving Mashpee's rural character. Now, I understand small-town character, but in a technical review of the existing development pattern, Mashpee has entered suburbia. And so, we have a suburban development pattern, and there, it's not, in my opinion, accurate to say we have retained rural character. We have, so my question is, how can we meet the needs of the future and grow in a manner that recognizes Mashpee's rural history, but is cognizant of the existing condition and modern identity as a New England suburb? And then, lastly...
So, that's when I started thinking, oh, that's going to be a good question when we get to visioning.
That's a great question. It's a great question.
Coexist.
Put that in the parking lot, right? Put it in the parking lot until we get visioning.
We could coexist, you know?
Of course, but, you know, so I just wanted to state that.
That's a good point.
And then, my last question was about agricultural activity. This chapter discussed a lot about enhancing Mashpee's agricultural assets and enhancing an agricultural economy where feasible. It's my understanding that, you know, the last remaining agricultural activities in the town and in the region were cranberry bogs, which are not sustainable and no longer being actively farmed in any productive manner. There are still some active bogs in the town, but generally, I think converting them back to natural wetlands is an appropriate approach. So, I just posed a question about, you know, how do we feel about retaining agricultural activities in this updated plan as it was in 1998, given the existing condition and the local economy, agricultural economy of Cape Cod? You know, how should, how should we consider opportunities for enhancing agricultural opportunity as it plays into both open space and conservation, but also economic development as well? And then, each table just kind of dives into what was accomplished in the short and long-term action plans. The long-range plans contained in the open space chapter are generally consistent with what you see in the long-range plan for the 2007 open space plan, and it's really to preserve and protect as many parcels within the boundaries of the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge as possible, to preserve sensitive habitat, wetland resources, et cetera. I would imagine that vision will remain unchanged and will remain true today. The reality is today that, again, Mashpee's done an exceptional job preserving the parcels that were defined in this plan. What has remained to be preserved is far fewer and much more expensive. So, we need to consider that approach in consideration of, again, existing trends, future needs, like housing. So, that's it. I'll hope to have coastal resources for you, future meeting, economic development, and growth management in the long term.
I have a question. There's no wastewater. We're going to talk about that, because you can't have housing without wastewater. A lot of these things are going to be in place.
Yeah, well, there, wastewater is treated in multiple elements of the comprehensive plan. Coastal resources is one, water and wastewater facilities is another. It bridges multiple chapters, so we will get to that. But we do have a plan in place as well. So, there are opportunities to make sure that this update is cognizant and recognizes the approved Comprehensive Watership Nitrogen Management Plan and any clean water plan that is approved by the sewer commission and/or board of select.
So, I was, I was wondering if you could take all of our old chapters and come and map them out to all the titles of the new chapters?
I do have an outline that I can provide to you.
You know what I mean? Because I was like, yeah, where did that go?
Yes.
It's all in there, I know, but there's likely different titles.
I got all the more books, but, you know, I was looking at them.
Yes, I meant to provide that, and I will have that for you at a future meeting.
Oh, good.
And so, again, I did want to have more assessments completed for you, but...
It's okay.
This is what I have completed. It is a, it is a heavy lift, and I do want to keep the momentum going and keep you apprised of where we are, and keep carrying the forward momentum of the updated plan going. And again, there is, there is a lot that ought to carry over into this updated document. And so long as our community engagement activities support these activities, again, you'll see them in the updated document.
All right. One other question. The Cape Cod Commission, when we did this plan, was different than they are today.
Yes.
So, is some of this stuff still viable with the Cape Cod Commission? Are they going to say, we have to really follow their regional policy plan?
We do need to demonstrate compliance and consistency with the regional policy plan. I think the way we've designed our community engagement activities and the framework for that approach, it does a good job of that. And then, certainly, our structure of the document itself will want to be framed with the systems approach that the Cape Cod Commission has defined in the regional policy plan. I mean, certainly, as we finish drafts of existing condition chapters, and when the board is in a position to complete drafts of the elemental chapters, will want to send those drafts to the Cape Cod Commission for their review.
That was my next question.
Because then they can highlight any potential red flags or concerns that they may have prior to you adopting it, sending it to town meeting for adoption, and then going to the commission for review.
Good.
Okay. Who wants to go next? John or Michael?
I'm going.
I'm going through everything, and there's a lot of data, but there are a lot of similarities. Once we can work through both sides of it and capture both sides, I think it'll come to fruition at some point down the road a lot easier. But right now, it's a lot of reading.
It is a very text-intensive document.
Yeah.
It takes some work to navigate.
Karen?
Maybe I should have made a copy of this for everyone. We looked, Mary, you and I looked at this document. I tried to plug in the old topics from the 98 LCP.
Yeah.
Into these sections here. Let me just ask you one question, because one I wasn't really sure of. Under natural systems, drives the region's economy. I was using, you know, trying to use the language and plug it in to see if we covered everything. Plus, there'll be more, too. Coastal resources would go under there?
I think so.
Okay. The other thing is, yeah, you're right. While there is no doubt that people still value the small-town charm of Mashpee, Mashpee has undoubtedly lost its rural character, and its fabric is now consistent with New England suburbia. For me, coming from Florida outside of Fort Lauderdale, this is not suburbia.
Is it rural?
It's somewhere between rural and small-town.
I'll give you that.
It's not rustic. I'll give you that. It's not rustic.
Is there a farm in this town?
We have Cape Cod.
I guess there's one.
It's about farm.
I don't want to pick, it said about.
I mean, are we a suburb of what, Boston?
Well, that's a question I actually feel that, contextually speaking, if you think about the suburbs of Boston, the patterns of development are consistent.
Yeah.
It's a, you know, auto-centric sprawl pattern. It's my assessment of things.
When you talk about agriculture, what about the blue culture? I mean, that's farm.
Blue economy. That is largely contained in the coastal resources chapter, so you'll have a lot of, the shelf is constable, and the DNR director gave a lot of their time to review that chapter with me, so we'll be able to dive into that a bit when I have that completed.
Karen, you good?
Yes.
John?
The only question I had was what Dennis asked, was if we were going to float some of this to the commission. I go, just to, so that they're aware of what we're doing, and they don't...
We should, they recommend, and I would suggest, that as we have completed drafts, that we submit those drafts to them for their review and consideration.
Rob?
Well, yeah, I have a, you mentioned part of your goals, or the previous goals, was to retain 50% of open lands as open lands and develop. But there is a housing shortage. There is a development need for more housing and diverse housing. Is there any given, and you talked about agriculture. There's not a lot of agriculture evidence here.
Correct. That's what I was getting at.
So, if you, around the state, around the country, there's an effort to take land, land out of development production and make them, quote, tree farms or agriculture-only farms.
Sure.
And there's incentives, tax incentives, you know, grant incentives. And the big issue now is buy local, you know, raise local. I don't know what is good for, you know, a local crop here that will sell local, other than cranberries.
Sure.
But something that I'd love to see explored to...
Yeah.
Take some of the land, instead of, you know, just having trees grow on it, make it productive for the people that live here, and still keep the same open space, small-town, rural aspect where you can.
I think it's important, you know, that's why I asked the question, you know, it's like, the existing condition, you know, there isn't an agricultural economy here. There might be an interest for it, but we probably need to have an understanding from the community if that would be of interest, and also what is economically viable for the potential farmer. I did have a conversation with the tribe today, and the chairman noted that, you know, establishing better food sovereignty for the Wampanoag is very important for them, and that's something that they're actively looking at, which I got me further considering agricultural opportunities in the town. So, I think, you know, one, as I read the 1998 chapter on, on open space and agriculture, there's a, in my opinion, a significant deviation from what the goals were then for agriculture and what exists today. So, as we, you know, engage with communities in the natural system workshop, for example, getting an understanding of how the community would like to move in that direction is important. But further, we definitely need to understand the viability and feasibility of establishing such an agricultural economy in the town. And that's a worthwhile goal and action to take in the plan, if that's something the community would support.
Yeah, just, just a point of reference. Tony Andrews Farm over in, they can't grow enough on their property, current boundaries, so they have to, they basically buy their vegetables and sell it on the stand.
Yeah.
And yet, there's open land all around them that could be developed into something more productive than having a nice-looking tree on it.
Good idea.
So, anything from Weston and Sampson, Carolyn or Ashley? Okay. So, again, to the people that are home, if you have comments about this topic, please get in touch with Evan, our town planner. And your number is 508...
539-1414.
1414. That's 508-539-1414. And Marge, you had a comment, and yes, thank you, Carol.
I want to speak in favor of the rural aspect of Mashpee, because I think it is important to the community. It's something that I'm sure you'll be asking, and you'll find out. But it's the rural feel which goes with small-town. And the opposite of that, if you take it away, is urbanization, which I don't think people want here. So, I would argue that you should keep rural feel. Maybe we're not exactly a rural community, but I know what Karen said. If you come from a place that is distinctly suburban, this looks rural in comparison.
Understood.
Thank you.
Well, we'll ask that during the, we're asking those types of questions during these listening sessions.
Yeah, my, you know, it's a...
I think the survey and the visioning piece, too, right?
Yeah.
You know, my commentary is only on what I see as an existing condition on the ground. It's not necessarily my feeling one way or the other. I think if you were to ask an architect or an expert in what they see when they come here, they would generally agree with me. But, you know, I, I know that everyone here values the small-town charm of this community. If you want to call it rural, that's fine. I'm just saying that I don't believe that it is.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, that was great. So, if you can just start giving us lists of chapters, when, you know, what, kind of like what we should concentrate on.
Sure.
Yeah.
One little thing, you know, I asked, I asked if, you know, as you're going through these, identify survey questions and visioning exercises, right, or things that need to be discussed when we talk about the vision statement. But also, I was wondering if you would look at how these current goals and objectives match up to the Cape Cod Commission?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Is there anything that would fall out? You know, you know, there's, there's a part of people that want to keep the same goals and objectives, right? But is there anything that would fall out upon Cape Cod Commission review? Do you know what I mean?
I do know what you mean. I'll have to look at it. But again, we haven't gotten through the entire community engagement.
Yeah.
So, it's really up to the community who's participating in the engagement and the subsequent surveys, who are defining the goals and objectives. So, again, what I mean to say is that, any goal and objective that's identified in 1998 that is supported by the community engagement activities we're undertaking now is going to carry through. If it's not, if the community isn't supportive in some way, then it shouldn't carry through.
All right, thank you.
I know, the Cape Cod Commission, you can't be less than their regulations, and you could be more strict.
You could be more, okay.
Yeah, I will, I will review and, and report back on that particular issue. Off the cuff, no, I don't think we're in contact with anything in particular, but I'll approach these reviews with that in mind. Thank you for your patience on these. It's a really heavy lift.
They were really good. Thank you, Evan. I, now, they're in our packet. It's not quite online yet, is it online?
No. These are in draft form. I still want to amend some things, but you can put the drafts up.
Well, I'm just thinking that some people might want to read them. So, should they just get in touch with you for a copy?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Okay, so the next piece is, that was preliminary assessments of 1998 action plans. The next one is existing conditions. Is that Weston and Sampson?
We just did that, right?
Oh, okay.
No, not really. I mean, I provided you, again, in your packets, the existing condition chapters.
And that was, but those were prepared by Weston and Sampson?
Yes, they were. And I've reviewed them. We've gone through them with some boards and committees. We've gone through them with department heads. The recreation-specific chapter has a lot of highlighted yellow. You didn't receive that one yet. That's amended with comments from Mary Bradbury. So, I've provided you that additional copy. And again, we really want to continue rounding out and finalizing these existing conditions, so that we can, you know, begin thinking about future goals, policies, and actions. so that we can, you know, begin thinking about future goals, policies, and actions. So we're setting a deadline for feedback on these for a month from now, if the board is okay with that deadline. Mary's provided comments. I haven't heard from other members of the planning board. We'll continue going to, I think, follow-ups with department heads, boards, and committees. But again, this is an assessment of all of the data that we have available. So that's inclusive of the entirety of the literature review I provided to our consultants. That's the Cape Cod Commission data that's available online, United States Census, American Community Survey, I mean, you name it, existing plans and reports, technical analyses. So there's a lot of caveats in these drafts, because we don't have all the information.
These are the ones that look like this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so a lot of the information needs to be rounded out via stakeholder interviews. But again, the existing conditions aren't to prescribe goals and actions. They're the basis, the foundation for which we assess the direction moving forward in consideration of the vision the town defines. We want to solidify these so we can really begin thinking about the future, so we can, and have a firm definition of the state of what is, of the present.
So you're looking for planning board member comments within the month?
We'd really like to wrap these comments up within the month. And, you know, I know there was an interest from the board to have working sessions and dive into some of these similar, like we've done at the sewer commission, and like we've done at CONCON, and we've done at Fort Housing Committee, and got, I don't know if I'm missing anyone. But if there's an interest in doing that tonight, we can dive in tonight if you want some time to...
I think we need time.
Assess and bring this back at our next meeting. I'm also fine with that. But I just want to stress the urgency with which we need to complete the existing conditions chapters.
Are we meeting June 8th at 9:00 in the morning?
I thought we were, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, that's all right.
Do you guys want to pick, pick a couple of those existing condition chapters and just be prepared to talk about them then?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Fine with us.
Why don't you give us a list in your order of priority?
Sure.
All right?
Email us, right?
Yeah, email us in your order of priority, and we'll just start from that list and work our way down. Does that sound good?
Great.
All right.
Can I ask a quick clarification?
Yes.
So this, in the recreation, this is what, this has been updated? The highlighted is been updated?
Yellow is from Mary Bradbury.
Okay. I didn't understand that.
Yeah, there was some, if I'm trying to think back, it feels like it's been some time since we met with Mary. But she wanted to specifically note out the recreational facilities and services that were town-sponsored, provided by her department, and recreational facilities that not weren't necessarily town-owned amenities. And so we separated that up.
So what we have here, right, section one of each of these is the vision, which is blank. Section two is the introduction. Section three is the existing conditions. So will this build, will you have, like, section four be a different element?
Well, I mean, I think that's up for discussion, and we want to kind of talk to you about format. There's a couple of different ways to structure a comprehensive plan. And so we did, we are asking you for your feedback to start to think about how this is going to be laid out.
Excellent. Well, that was a leading question. So I don't think, are there any questions from the audience about existing conditions? You can get the drafts from the town planner, if you want to, like, there might be somebody who has some expertise in housing that might want to look at them. All right, so the next one is, I guess, it's survey framework, but I think it's your presentation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I'll hand it over to Ashley and Carolyn.
Thank you. So we wanted to take one step back and review with you kind of the overall approach, because you have two new members. We wanted to give them the opportunity to kind of catch up to speed and also lay out to you some of the things that we've been discussing with Evan on how to move everything forward. So if you go to the, well, this is just a brief agenda of topics for us to go over with you. And this is pretty, you know, high-level stuff that we just want to set the stage for how things are, you know, how we're looking at things moving forward. So Mary, to your question that you teed up for me, there's a couple of different ways to do, you know, an approach to an LCP. But what we've seen over the last, you know, 10, 15 years, is a real shift from a traditional approach, which was very chapter-oriented, very text-heavy. And I think you can see that your existing 1998 plan kind of follows these, this format. It was pretty technical in its approach and in its writing. It's very data-driven, as opposed to kind of public opinion-driven. There was typically less public participation than we're seeing a call for in recent years. It was usually limited to, like, a survey and one big public meeting, where now we're seeing multiple surveys, we're seeing websites, we're seeing Facebook and social media opportunities, we're seeing multiple community events. You know, it really kind of lacked a specific direction for implementation. It was relatively, you know, generic typically, although in your plan, there are definitely some specific calls for action. And it did not often take into account regional considerations. You know, the Cape Cod Commission has come a long way. They have taken a lot of time and energy to look at things from a regional approach. And so now you have an opportunity, I think, to pull that into your approach to this. What we're seeing more in modern comprehensive plans and master plans is that system-oriented approach, looking at things in a similar way. And this is not just being done by the Cape Cod Commission, but we're seeing things being looked at as systems, and like the Cape Cod Commission does, natural systems, built systems, community systems, and kind of what falls under those, as opposed to the traditional chapter approach, where we would look at housing independently, economic development independently, and have to try to draw thread through each chapter, because they're very much interrelated. Using a systems approach, kind of groups those like things together a little bit more and kind of, you know, synthesizes that information across those systems. Modern plans are far more visual than traditional plans. Traditional plans were very much text-heavy, very little in the way of pictures and graphics. Now we're seeing very, very visually-rich documents that are easy to read, easy to understand, for the average citizen to pick up and get a good sense of where the community wants to go in the future, as opposed to having to read page after page of just complete blocks of text in order to glean out of that, you know, what the community is trying to do. They're far more policy and action-driven at this point. We're seeing a lot of plans that upfront, the first thing that you get into is the implementation plan, or the vision and the actions to get to the vision. And a lot of the data, a lot of the existing conditions, are being housed in an appendix in the back of the document, so that anybody who wants to know how you got there can go look for it, but doesn't have to sift through all of that to get to the real, you know, meat of the document and the purpose of it. There's, as I was saying, there's a much bigger focus on public participation. We are seeing a huge shift in a call for more meetings, more engagement. Now we have social media, which of course is always a double-edged sword, but gives you the ability to get out there to the public a lot more. So we're also seeing a shift towards making, you know, requirements or policy in the document scalable. Can we do this on a neighborhood level? Can we do this on a regional level? And they're trying to move towards being more visionary and anticipating of change. So those are the real, we wanted to kind of lay that out for you to consider moving forward. Next slide. So we've given some thought in how to accomplish a modern plan in Mashpee to kind of meet the needs of the community and the changes that we've seen in LCPs over time, but also not forget that you have an existing plan, and there is good information in there that we need to look at and figure out how to move pieces of that forward as it's appropriate. So really, what we're doing, and I think we've said this before, we wanted to reiterate this, and also, you know, for your new members, review the existing chapters, look at the facts and figures in there, make sure that they're up to date with the most recent information, figure out ways to reorganize the document a bit, maybe using that kind of systems approach so that we don't have, we don't, we may not have chapter by chapter, it may be more system-oriented. That's really a decision for you guys to consider and think about. We want to make it more readable and user-friendly for the average person, to not have to pick up a giant book of 300 pages that's just all text. That's, you know, that's intimidating for some, for most people. We want to, you know, highlight the public participation and how we can link the results of that public participation to actionable items, both action items in your current plan and then newly-formulated action items, that may be something that's a brand-new concept that's come up since your 1998 plan, or something that maybe was brought up in that plan but has to be adjusted and amended to current times to move it forward. Obviously, as we talked about, we want to include appropriate and relevant links to the Cape Cod Commission and make sure that you're going to be consistent, and include new and emerging topics. Your previous plan doesn't contemplate climate change. It doesn't contemplate resiliency or energy, because those are things that have happened since the document was written in 1998. So, you know, these are the things that we've talked about with Evan and kind of thoughtfully tried to transition your existing document into modern times, to cover new topics and to bring forward any of the things that are still relevant, that are supported by all the public participation and the feedback that we're gathering. So this is just a reminder, these are, these are the existing conditions as currently organized, but it doesn't have to stay this way. This is something, again, for the commission, the board to think about. What makes sense, you know, from your perspective for the, you know, the new design of this plan? We can consolidate these, we can separate these, we can group them, you know, whatever you think works best for Mashpee. So again, the approach to these existing conditions is to, again, review those chapters, reuse and reorganize relevant information in the existing chapters, update existing information based on the most recent data. And then for policies and actions, which is the direction we're moving in, once we can get those existing conditions kind of put to rest, to a good degree, continue to gather that public feedback through the various public engagement tools that we've worked to put together with you and with Evan. Continue to gather that staff, board, and commission feedback through interviews and meetings with boards and commissions, asking them to review, in their review of existing conditions, to highlight what gaps there are, or what strengths there are that you want to continue, and where you want to fill in existing gaps. You know, reviewing existing policies and actions through the lens of the feedback that we're collecting, making sure that anything that is carried forward continues to be a relevant issue for the community. You know, we want to take, move forward any of those publicly-supported policies and actions, and then work to formulate new policies and actions based on that information that's being collected. And just a couple of examples for you, and these are not all of the examples out there, but to give you kind of an idea of where these, we've seen these plans go recently, they're, you know, these are typically short documents. This, I think the Situate, Mass. one was just over 100 pages, as opposed to the traditional, like, you know, 200-plus, 300-page document. You can see they used symbology to carry themes throughout the document, so that's a nice way to visually tie things together for people. The text pages are not, you can, you can keep going. The text pages are not overly burdened with text. They're separated into reasonably digestible chunks. They're interspersed with maps that express, you know, and support the text that's there. They're highlighted with pictures that also support, you know, the text that's given. The, this is from Beverly, Mass. Again, it was just over 100, I think it was closer to like 150 pages. But it used a format where it identified, you know, and this is an example, I believe this is from the land use chapter, where they identified an area that was targeted for growth. On the next page, they identified the issues and opportunities around that particular area, and then they transitioned it into goals, policies, and actions for that particular, you know, identified area. So it's very streamlined, it's very easy to follow, it's well-organized, and it's not overly burdensome for the average person to get through. So we just wanted to give you a couple of examples. Again, they're not the only examples out there. There's lots of things to look at as you consider, you know, how you want to put this together. And, you know, Mary, to your question, we could organize it in a way that section, I think it's two, section three would be issues and opportunities, section four would be recommended actions. Or you can contain the existing conditions as an appendix, it can go into the back of the document. You can have your chapter where upfront, you give a very brief overview of existing conditions and send someone to the appendix for more information, and then jump right into, you know, the actions that you're looking to accomplish. So it's really a preference thing for the planning board, how you want to organize this. But we wanted to start to get your, you know, thinking about these things, because it does, it does matter in how we continue to structure, you know, the work that we're doing. So, you know, certainly don't need an answer right now, but it would be a good idea to start considering that and to, you know, have another conversation about it in the near future. I think that's, oh, survey is next. So we spent some time with Evan today on the 2011 survey, and we came up with an overall approach. We want to review, continue to review the 2011 survey questions. We have talked about some general survey standards and best practices that are well-researched and available out there to anyone who's, you know, structuring a survey. We'd like to update the 2011 questions to reflect current conditions. In a lot of cases, Evan was able to look at some of them and say, you know, this was done, this doesn't, this question doesn't need to be here anymore, or this question is kind of no longer relevant. We want to organize the questions by, I mean, there's two choices to do. One is to do one big survey, to organize the questions by topic, or to separate the surveys and have topical surveys that somebody can go in and just answer questions about housing, just answer questions about economic development. We also have the ability to, if we have a long survey where it's organized by topic, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can save your place and go back. People have a relatively short attention span for surveys. We don't want to overburden people with a tremendous amount of information and ask them to spend 35 minutes, you know, sitting down with a survey. But because we can do that, save and come back, people could do it in chunks, and we can make that clear, that that's an available option.
Yeah. And we can also, we can also incentivize it. You know, you've finished your survey, leave us your email, and we'll put you in a raffle for, you know, a giant Mashpee basket or something. You know, anything to get people to go to the finish line, so.
How that came up, that whole thing about one big survey, was we were going to mail it out.
Mm-hmm.
So we couldn't mail it out in three pieces.
I think, you know, one option, if we want, is we could structure the digital survey in separate sections, if you will.
Sure.
People could have the opportunity to take one at a time, but if we're going to do a mailer, it would have to be one.
It's better way, yeah.
Yes, Karen.
The format could be in the same format as the plan is written. You know, the chapter, each chapter, the goals, policies, and actions. In other words, it'd be a mirror image somehow? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's what I heard before, they were going to group the questions together.
Group them together. You can leave the survey if you can't finish today, come back tomorrow.
You might have new questions, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time going through the 2011 survey, and I think with some reasonable modifications and consideration to some of these best practices, we can, you know, recycle that in a really productive way. You know, and really, the survey is designed to, again, support the community engagement activities to get to the goals and the policies and the actions to be defined in the chapters themselves.
Okay. Rob?
Yep. Early on, in a few slides, you, and I totally agree, system approach to a margin... Early on, in a few slides, you, and I totally agree, a system approach to a margin LCP where you integrate those integrated items that now might, might put here for the survey would be also to consider a systems approach to the survey and not put them in boxes of housing, environment.
Sure.
Because they are truly integrated.
There's a lot of overlap.
I don't know how you structure that into chapter and section, but keeping that in mind would be, you know, going with the approach of systemizing.
Mm-hmm. So I think there's one more slide. Evan? So we just wanted to share with you, you know, in our experience and, and talking with Evan and, you know, that there is a, a body of work out there on how to put together a survey. Really, you want to identify your objective before you design the survey and the questions. Have a goal in mind and then write your questions to achieve that goal. We want to keep it relatively short and, and straightforward. We do not want to use jargon and technical terms and, and overwhelm people with data. We'll lose a good part of our audience if we start to, to do those things. We want to avoid biased or leading questions. We want the question to be relatively neutral as possible and the options underneath it as thorough as we can. And I think in our conversations, we're all supportive of the other option where people can fill in, you know, a box if we haven't provided them with the choice that they think of, because you, you can't think of everything. We're also leaning towards, in a couple of places, giving people just a text box to, to comment or to just write, you know, their opinions and feelings on certain things. Certainly, that's cer, that's, that's harder information to quantify, but it, it can be really useful to make sure that we're not missing anything. So we will also want to act, ask very direct questions. We don't want to be vague and have not, people not understand, you know, what, what the purpose of the question is or how they're supposed to answer it. So in, in, you know, we have gone over the, the 2011 questions, and I think there is a lot of good structure there. There is some leading questions that I think drive people in certain directions, and we want to tone those down and kind of neutralize how they're asked and make sure that people are given enough options to pick from in order to gain valuable feedback. We're leaning away from asking people to rank things by priority because then you're pitting one use against another use. We don't want to pit housing against economic development, but we do want people to tell us what's important to them. So we're leaning more towards, you know, how, how, what are your values or how important are things to you? Are they very important? Are they somewhat important as opposed to ranking things in a certain way? So those are the kind of adjustments we're looking at making, you know, basing everything on the 2011 survey and trying to transition a lot of that information forward, but using these basic best practices as our background as we, as we do that. And I think we discussed having a draft survey for you on the 15th, for your, your review.
Four.
Well, before the 15th, but for you to discuss at the meeting on the 15th, so that you can give us feedback on the questions. That's it.
May I ask you a question? In your experience with surveys and LCPs and our knowledge of other, what's the participation percentage of, we have 15,000 people, I don't know how many households that are, that comprise that, and I think we had, what, 651 answered the survey last time?
About that.
About that. And how, what, what would be a, a goal to have this LCP participation from, from the town?
Well, I think we, like, I think you asked me this once before, and I, I said 10% is like the gold, you know, ring of, of
You've done really well.
You've done extremely well. I don't want to give a number because I don't, I, I, I will be disappointed if it's less than 500, you know? I, I, I do feel like we should be aiming high if we can. I know Evan is thinking about ways to get the survey into people's hands if they're not online, or, you know, you know, in their hands and online. So, you know, we really, we really lean on you all too to spread the word and, and to every degree that we can be helpful in that, we will. But yeah, I, I, I think we should not have less than 500, but ideally have much closer to
10%?
Yeah, well, yeah.
That's a big number.
Yeah, that's a big number. That's why I'm thinking incentives and rewards.
Yeah, I mean, we, we did a survey in a town in Rhode Island, 10, 10,500 or so population. I think I, we got 160 responses or something, and we thought that was great, honestly.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you have to remember that this is not, that, this is not the type of survey that's like statistically significant. There's not going to be any huge data analysis kind of process that happens after this information is gathered. This is a snapshot in time, kind of, how do you feel, you know, about these particular issues at the moment? Certainly, they will be used to support and guide policy and actions moving forward, but they're not the, the be, it's, the survey is not the be-all, end-all of, you know, how you move your town forward. It's one of the tools that we use. Really, I think sometimes the, the best thing that you get out of, out of a survey can be awareness that there's a project happening, that people are, that they need to start paying attention, they need to start participating. You know, I wouldn't be surprised if after your survey comes out, you may see an increase in, in, you know, sign-ups on the website or attendance at public meetings, or maybe we start getting more emails through the website because people have seen that there's a survey, they become more aware of this project that's happening, they're now paying attention to the types of questions that are being asked of them. So you, you can, you can really kind of get people more involved by issuing a survey. You know, there's a couple of things to think about as well. I, I don't think we're concerned about the methodology in getting the information out to people, but, you know, when, when people start, we had, we had one, we started handing out cards, here's a postcard for the survey, and that becomes, you kind of bias your survey results because you're targeting specific, you know, populations of people by doing that. So you, you just want to keep those things in mind, that we want to spread the message universally, we don't want to just target certain populations because then you're going to get certain answers. But you can certainly look at ways to increase participation, and we can work with Evan and you on ideas on, on how to do that, whether it be, you know, handing out flyers at a variety of different public events or, or sending out an email blast or whatever, putting it, you know, even putting a blurb in the paper or something to, to get out to the general population that the survey is out there.
I was, like, last time I said, at the church, maybe I could hand them out, like, to give the, the thing out after mass, or even stand, like, start the shop and road runs and set up a thing, you know, if we have some volunteers.
Yep. There, there is the ability to, for us to
Enjoy to give them out at church.
For, for retail establishments or even churches or even the library or public buildings, we can create a QR code that would bring you to the survey, so somebody going into the supermarket can see a flyer on the door, they can pull out their cell phone and scan the code, and it will take them directly to the survey. So there are a lot of ways to, to get, to get people engaged, especially if they think they might win something for doing it.
And the planning department intern starts on Monday, who will be leading this community engagement effort for the survey.
I'm sure Stop &amp; Shop would donate a gift card for our, our welcoming standout at Stop &amp; Shop.
That was the thinking, was could we get a couple of small donations from area businesses that we could use as a raffle to, you know, once you, once you answer the survey and click submit, you, your email gets entered into a raffle.
If you put an ad in the enterprise with a QR code?
You can do that.
That's another way to get to
Yep.
Easily, yeah.
You get the whole ball of wax, too, right?
That's the idea, is to spread, spread the word, you know, far and wide so that you get, you get a good cross-section of the community responding.
It's just, I, I'm so afraid of the silent majority. There are so many people out there that, you know, nobody listens to me, why should I participate? I, I live in a 55-plus community, and I was so disheartened at the town meeting and at the voter turnout. It's, and, and I promote, you know, get, get involved, and it's just, it won't affect me five years down, down the line.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a real challenge, is getting younger people and families to engage in, in these activities and to participate. It's a challenge. They're busy, they don't have a lot of time for this stuff. So any way that we can make it really easy for them to do it is helpful.
Get back to the presentation. I like the way you did Situate. I like that format, that, that's nice. And like Robert said, everything's got to be interconnected, so we can really put this down to 100 pages instead of the big, big one.
That's, that's the movement we've, we've seen. I mean, I have heard multiple communities say, I, we don't want, you know, we don't want a 300-page document that sits on the shelf that nobody has the appetite to sit and read and, and comb through. You know, we're even seeing a movement towards creating a, you know, a leaflet or a summary that goes at the front that can, it's like, you know, 12 pages long, and it's like you can hand this out. It's very visual, it's very short, you know, and sweet and to the point.
And as I've mentioned, it could be an online, so you could even have an app or transition your website to an implementation tool so people can, you know, look at, look up their relevant actions in a meeting while, while it's going on.
Like the old plan, you have to look at this chapter
Carrie, right.
And then go with the other gentleman, they have to help me with the other
You know, part of the, the conversation we had this morning at the business coffee hour with some of the business owners too was, how do you, how do you transition everything that, that gets pulled together into action items that people can follow along with? And your current plan has a lot of action items that are embedded within chapters, and they're just, it's just written text, and you have to go searching for this stuff to, to figure it out. The idea being that you can have an implementation table that, topic by topic, lists out your actions, identifies the lead, the lead person who's in charge of initiating it, who supports them, what the timeframe is, you know, what the, the, the investment is by the community, whether it's monetary or staff time or whatever. And it's an easy way to keep track of your, your, essentially your checklist going forward.
Okay, so, so Rob, you've made comment. John, do you have?
I'm good.
Dennis?
I'm all set.
Michael?
Well, a good presentation. I think the chapters that we have today are boring. It takes a long time to get through it, and by the time you get to the conclusions, you're tired of reading. No question about it.
Karen, do you have anything?
You say you want to, you want to know who is the person who's going to take the lead in this, you want to know the money. How can that be relevant? Because this thing is a big thing that's going to last for 10 years. People come and go, obviously.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not people, it's positions. So if there's an, if there's a zoning amendment that's an action item, if you're going to change a certain portion of your zoning, we're going to identify the town planner as the act, as the lead and the planning board as the support and the town council as the support.
Sorry, really.
You know, or, excuse me, select board. So it's positions, it's not, not people.
What about the money?
Well, I mean, there's a couple of ways, some of them don't contemplate financing, some of them do.
Usually it's dollar signs. Is this a $1 sign? Is this the $5 sign?
Is this a small-ticket item? Is this a big-ticket item?
Inexpensive restaurant.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, like, like they do, like they review restaurants, you know, is it $1 or $2?
Yeah, in the, in the 98 document, there was a slight deviation in how that was dealt with in, for open space and transportation, for example. The open space acquisitions had a reasonable range of what the acquisition would cost. And same with transportation, it had some, some range of the expense that a certain intersection improvement would have, for example, but didn't provide concrete figures.
All right. So I was, I was wondering if you could go back to the existing conditions slide that has all the orange lines? So about your comment about water, you know, water is like, the watering housing of it, one and two, or two and one, whatever, wherever you are on those, those are the, the issues in town. I'm wondering, if it falls under natural resources, you just do natural resources, and, and then you put in parentheses what it covers?
We, and we've also discussed very briefly, and this is a conversation for the board, is, you know, given water quality is such a salient issue in the town, if we wanted to separate that out, it's a separate chapter itself.
How do you guys feel? Separate chapter?
Separate chapter.
Okay. Made a decision. Separate chapter.
You can't do anything without the water, the wastewater, house.
We had initially had it embedded in the natural resources chapter, but we thought it might be valuable.
Yeah, I mean, this is like standard format, there's, you don't have to follow this. There's no prescription anywhere that these are the exact chapters and the exact format that you have to follow.
It's a stop.
The other one, where, where would human services fall under?
Municipal buildings, facilities and services.
Health and human services.
I'd never find that.
Yeah, we may want to rename these.
Try to categorize.
If, if, if the services are human services, maybe we should put that.
I mean, human services is a relatively unconventional chapter to have in a comprehensive plan, so we just felt, given that the humans, especially in the 98 document and recent updates or attempts at updating, they all pertain to services provided by the town department. So it makes sense, in consideration of that, logical sense to put it there, but if you want
But you do, you have a staff person.
Yes.
It's very unique.
So the other way to resolve this is in your table of contents, that you just have municipal buildings, facilities and services, and then underneath that you can, you can list what's contained within that chapter. So if somebody's specifically looking for something, they can scan the main, you know, headings and find, find what they're looking for. As opposed to stretching out headings and having long, excessive headings.
Because it could be human services, it could be plowing.
It, it could be a variety of services.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it, under this, we're talking about police, fire, you know, Department of Health, human services, all of those things would fall under services.
So the timing for the survey, you're going to give us a draft?
June 15.
June 15. We have, we have a, the Built Systems Workshop after that. Would the survey capture what's going on in the comments in the Built System?
So, we're giving you a, a draft? It doesn't mean we can't continue to, to edit as, as we, we just want to keep the ball rolling forward with, with the survey so that when, when it's time to roll it out, it's, it's in good shape.
Because if, if there suddenly becomes this intense, great idea at that workshop, and we've already done the survey, I don't want to miss that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're saying you have to administer the survey at that point, but we just want to get you to start thinking about these questions, start refining these questions. Certainly, if something comes out of a workshop that happens right after that, we can amend.
Okay, great. Yeah, Karen?
When would we send out the survey, assuming we're mailing it?
I mean
Would it be after the workshops are done?
It's up to you.
Yeah, I think that's up for discussion on what you feel is appropriate. We just want to keep moving it forward.
I think we should wait until that third workshop.
It's done.
I think we will know by, we'll probably be facilitating the tables at that point, right, all of us, and we'll, we'll, I think we'll know pretty quickly. And you've been very quick to give us the summaries of stuff. I, I think that you would know right away if we were missing something from the survey. Yeah, but, but I think, obviously, we can't have the, the draft for public comment without the survey done, so it's almost like we don't want to wait too long. August is a time off for this town also, so we just have to think about that.
Yeah.
If we, if we push the survey out in August, we should put it back out in September. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
After school, I talk to you, after school starts but before Halloween. It's a really good time to engage people down there.
Can we put an ad in the paper saying, we're going to send out a survey at the date we're going to send it out?
As soon as you tell me when you'd like to have the survey issued.
No, but I mean, before we send out the survey, that, like, two weeks before.
Yeah, when you identify a, a date for which it should be issued, I'm happy to do that.
Just to get people more notice.
Absolutely.
I like to get that 10%.
All right, we got our goal. Anything else?
That's all we have unless you have other questions.
No.
Is there any comment from the public on this? Lynn?
I just wanted to note that the 2011 survey had 662 respond, people fill it out.
That, that hit Caroline's goal.
Right, yeah, so it's, it exceeds that goal. And it was, you know, done Survey Monkey and I guess in person as well. I wasn't here at the time. and I guess in person as well. I wasn't here at the time. But yes, it's not impossible to get 500. No. I mean, hopefully we would get more than even 600. My concern is, having done a lot of organizing over the years, that we will, we should have a lot of potential gatherings, meetings, occasions for people to come and get the survey and fill it out and leave it there as well. There are a lot of people who aren't going to do it online. They, I mean, when I was just talking to the veterans serviceman, he said, most of the veterans that he works with don't have internet. So we have a, we don't have a high, we have a lot of, and a lot of people where I live don't do internet because they're in their 90s. Not, not to criticize that, but they just don't. They don't have emails or anything. So I think we need to think about, once we have the survey, of having, you know, two days a week at the library, come in, fill out the survey, whatever, be places where people can get the survey in a piece of paper and fill it out right then and there, as well as give them the resources to, you know, to do it online. So that means that we probably will be not doing this. We'll have to do the survey in late July, August and September in order to get as broad a, but you said you wanted to do a lot more of, you know, public, public participation. So I'm looking forward to having some of those kinds of gatherings even before we have the survey. So it's to just get, like you all did this morning with business, with some other groups to, you know, meet and to talk about whatever and get them in their mind that there will be a survey.
Great. Anybody else? Well, thank you so much for spending the day again in Mashpee. And I think that you're getting to know the community really well, and I think the survey is in good hands.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take a five? Can it break?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, thanks.
They must be tired. They were here since this morning.
They couldn't stay. The business schedule was good. We didn't have enough people. For the people that showed up, it was good.
Yeah.
But yeah, we got.
They just look at the vote and the hundreds of people and you're spending 50, 60 billion dollars or something. I try to get my son, I mean, he comes to vote.
Even though. See, those are the guys that will do it.
Yeah.
You know, because they won't go, they won't go to the library on a Saturday afternoon.
I have him sometimes to help me on that. I'm not a voter. Give me a plan to build a house.
You know, you know where you're going.
Famous place. I mean, everybody goes there.
Good luck.
Yeah, and I'm so happy that it's.
Doing well.
Yeah, continuing because.
Thank you.
And deliver.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. How are you? But I can replace it if you don't, if you want.
We will watch them, bring them back.
Watches both of them. No, I guess from wherever. But they do, they were selling both of them to me. I don't know if they have them there now or not.
Thank you.
I know it'll be after tomorrow, Friday, so I'll talk to you next week.
Yes. Enjoy your Friday's morning.
I shall.
So Evan, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the Cape Cod Commission and get more copies.
Cool.
Could you make the inserts?
Or?
They're 11 by 17 and they're color.
Absolutely.
All right. And I'll, I'll get, they have tons of these, but they, they really painstakingly put these inserts in.
Okay.
And so if I just get the 10 and you make the copies.
Do you look for an agenda?
Yeah, I don't want to take something. Thank you.
Now we've lost Karen.
We lost who?
We lost Karen.
Try getting a sweater, she's cold.
She ran a wag?
She ran. Well, she probably thought we went.
The heat won't pick on, but I turned up the air. Oh, God, shit. Freaks in here.
Okay, we're going to re-convene the meeting. The next item is consideration of a letter of support for joint application to CPC by Conservation and Planning Departments.
Hey, the meeting's starting.
Hi. Hi. So I'm re-convening the meeting. Next item is consideration of a letter of support for joint application to CPC, which is the Community Preservation Committee, by Conservation and Planning Departments for the acquisition of property addressed 751 Main Street for open space. So Evan, do you want to bring us through that?
I, I would. You know, we recently submitted, or the board submitted a letter suggesting that the open space committee be reestablished for purposes like this. But in the absence of having that done, my office fielded a, not a completed application, but I submitted a plan for subdivision at this subject property. The property owner didn't lay out the subdivision as a cluster. So I said this would, would be inadequate in consideration of the requirements of zoning and subdivision rules and regulations. And if they want to subdivide this property, it would, it'd have to be configured as a cluster. But in that same response, I, in consideration of the parcel's location, directly abutting the Pickle Cove Conservation Area, abutting the open space that's required by the Pickle Cove Neighborhood Association Cluster Subdivision, the parcels within the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge Acquisition Boundary, it's an identified parcel of interest in the, in the 98 comp plan and again, the 2000, Open Space Plan, 2007 Open Space Plan, as privately held lands of conservation interest. And so I wanted to seek an opportunity to pose the question to the property owner whether or not they would be interested in a negotiation for the town to purchase the property to expand the Pickle Cove Conservation Area as an open space acquisition. The property owner is willing. I've sat down with the conservation agent, the property owners, Aranda Wildlife Land Trust and Mass Fish and Wildlife to discuss this project. They are all interested in learning more. Ultimately, we felt that the most prudent pathway, absent an open space committee being reestablished, as we, as prior years have done, would be to submit jointly with my department and the Conservation Department, a request for funding, the funding amount conditional upon a third-party appraisal. We proposed this course of action to the property owner who was willing to support that endeavor. And so, you know, having a willing property owner to, to, is really the, the jumping points. It's square one. So this, the, I put in your packets, a draft letter of support. I, I had it coming from the chair. I know Mary, you sit on the CPC, so I'm not sure if the letter should come from you or not.
I don't think it should. That's one of my comments.
That's just a draft.
And I probably, if I'm going to vote on the, on the CPC, I should probably not vote here.
Understood. So I, I've also included a draft of the application that I put together with Drew McManus. It's pretty well complete. What I was suggesting is that we obtain letters of support for this project. It's, I think, should be noted that this is developed land for single-family dwellings. It's going to be expensive in consideration of current market trends. And so purchasing, enhancing purchasing power is going to be really critical. So identifying partnerships via this process is going to be really important. Like I've said, you know, we've met with Aranda, who's shown interest. We've met with Mass Fish and Wildlife. But we may need to seek additional funding. But first step is assessing the value of the property. And so I'm seeking your support on this for submission to the CPC to get the ball rolling. And as I've stated in the draft letter of support, we're really hoping the CPC would fund a, initially, an appraisal that is compliant with Yellow Book standards. I'm not 100% familiar with what that means. That was the suggestion from the folks from Mass Fish and Wildlife. And so that's it in a nutshell. You know, we don't have open space acquisition opportunities come up all the time in consideration of what's already protected and, you know, development pressures on the rest of the town. So it's nice to have a willing property owner. This isn't a 50 or 60 or 70 acre parcel. It's eight acres. It's relatively modest. But given its contiguity with adjacent conservation land, being in, you know, having the ability to expand the potential trail network, being in close proximity to Pickle Cove and Mashpee Wakeby, it seems like a good parcel for an open space acquisition. So I'd seek your support in seeking to make that happen.
I make a motion, we support a letter to the, with the Conservation and the Planning Board to buy the piece of property at 751 Main Street for open space.
Side by the vice chair?
Side by the vice chair.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And I abstain. That's great. Oh, I didn't ask for public comment. Did anybody have any? Okay. I'll get used to it. Okay. So I placed two new business items on the agenda and I titled them. And if you guys want to go with a different title in the future, I'm fine. Clean Water Initiative and Affordable, Affordable and Workforce Housing. So the backstory with the Clean Water Initiative, you know, it's a high priority for the town to, to improve our water quality townwide. As you know, in the fall of 2021, the Board of Selectmen convened a roundtable of the regulatory boards. And it, we, we were supposed to meet again, but that kind of fell apart because of COVID. But we were assigned a job to look at what's in under our jurisdiction and come up with suggestions on what to do to protect our water and improve our water in town. So I wanted to start that. Again, I asked Evan for some time, some of his time, for him to look at our rules and regulations, you know, our bylaws, maybe our stormwater regulations. I don't know if they're, they're in our purview, but I know that special permit applications come before us with design, stormwater management. Maybe that's something that we can beef up. And I, I'm also kind of putting it out to all the board members and hopefully the public, you know. If they see some idea that they, they go, oh, you know, the planning board should have dealt with that. And that would have improved the, the water in town. Now is the time to kind of bring those ideas forward.
We did do, Beverly Kane, when she was chairperson, water, you know, we did some, you know, new sewer systems and stuff. And then it.
Right. I think our, is our cluster subdivision, doesn't that require?
D nights.
D nights.
Heat notification systems.
Yeah.
Or some other, you know, mitigation strategy, like for the Aqua Highlands subdivision, for example, in lieu of installation of D nights, there was a monetary contribution for the purchase of shelter seats.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And then, like, some of our developments, you know, the plants come in and they have vegetated swales.
Right.
They have their, their water from, their runoff water from their roof has to go into a vegetated swale, like that kind of stuff. See if we can beef that up and apply it to more and more towns. Pieces are right. It might be a public, you know, information session. You know, the, the Department of Natural Resources had that wonderful session about ponds. And they devoted a whole time on what homeowners can do individually about fertilizer and runoff. And just, we might want to promote that stuff through the planning board. So I was going to kind of keep it on the agenda.
Okay.
Every meeting and try to make progress on that. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
All right for me.
Is there anybody from the public that, Paul? And, and, yeah, I'm going to have you, oh, no.
Here, there.
Paul, if you want to go now about water?
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm looking for comments about the Clean Water Initiative.
I'm deaf, Mary. And what you just said sounded like something from a mask from another planet, which is pretty much what everything is.
So we're on, we're on the Clean Water Initiative?
Oh.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah. So there's a Mr. Paul Colombo behind you.
Apologies.
No, that's okay.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, Planning Board members.
Grab a mic.
Thank you for allowing me to address your Clean Water Initiative in tonight's agenda. For the record, my name is Paul Colombo. I live at 35 Meadowbrook Road. And I am also the current Secretary of the Mashpee Conservation Commission. Tonight, I would like to first speak to you as a full-time resident of Mashpee. But I will then make a very clear transition to inform you what we have been working on with the Conservation Commission, primarily in our most recent meeting on May 26. For those of you who don't know my background, I came to Mashpee about six years ago. I'm a retired school teacher, secondary schools and higher education, environmental sciences and physical sciences as well. I worked for the National Science Foundation for many years, developing web-based environmental data programs for secondary school teachers. And I also have an ex- data programs for secondary school teachers. And I also have an extensive background in working on conservation commissions for the town of Clinton and the city of Leominster before I came here. So it's been my thing my entire life. I started probably at age 13, out in the woods, and just fell in love with the environment. Here in Mashpee, I don't have to go through. You all know what's going on. And I bring, I think, a unique perspective to the table. We don't all agree on everything, but we do all work together. It's a team, whether it's conservation, or planning, or Board of Health, or zoning, or select board. We have a major issue on our hands. And I know the focus is on sewer-ing. It's going to be a long, arduous, winding road for all of us to travel down. And let me tell you why I know that is. When I chaired the Conservation Commission in the town of Clinton, this goes back to 1982 to 1989. The wastewater treatment plant in the town of Clinton was woefully inadequate. It was operated by the Metropolitan District Commission, that was eventually taken over by the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority in 1987. And it needed a complete build-out, a complete retrofit, as mandated from the Clean Water Act of 1972. Boston Harbor, I'm sure you remember all the political ads, the dirtiest place on the face of the earth. Well, the town of Clinton sits on the south branch of the Nashville River, which eventually finds its way right down to the Boston Harbor. So we had a job, and it was, well, it was a job. And this was back in the 1980s. I wouldn't call it quite Camelot. That was early 60s, but compared to today, I think the 1980s might have been a Camelot. We had not only the build-out of the wastewater treatment facility, we had a sister project at the same time. We were building a sludge landfill facility in the capped Town of Clinton landfill, which sits right on the shores of South Meadow Pond and Mossy Pond. Talk about a filled bill. So, you know, I've been down the road. I've seen it. I know how it all plays out. The town of Clinton had pipes in the ground. Not the entire town, but certainly the biggest proportion of it. That town has a population of above 13,000, could be 13,500, square miles of 5.4 compared to Mashpee, which I think is 27,200. But the populations are fairly similar, albeit Clinton a little smaller. So I bring that figure to you so that you can at least consider how much of a smaller land area it was back there and the impact that those people had on it. There's a lot of talk tonight about, are we rural? Are we suburban? So we have some elbow space here, but we have a completely different environment. We're right on the ocean. When I, when I think back of everything that we had to go through, that entire process reminds me a lot of the early stages of what I've seen here in Mashpee. The difference being, you know, we're arguing phase one, and we're arguing phase two. I guess we're not arguing phase one anymore. It's, it's set. But phase two's up in the air, whether it's 2A, 2B, 2C, 2D, you know, there's all kinds of issues there. But I'm primarily concerned about, not phase one, not phase two, I'm concerned about the rest, the rest. Because we have a very serious nutrient-loading problem in this town.
Paul, do you, do you want us to put this on as an agenda item? It seems like you have a lot to tell us.
I do have, you know, I tried to, at first I tried to get it down to three, then I was thinking, well, maybe they'll tolerate 10. I've got a glass of water. I've got my iPad. I've got some things here. I'd like to, it's a very difficult topic to abbreviate. It really is, especially where I've been-
What I'm saying is, should we, should we, should we put that on the, as an agenda item for the next time?
Sure.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would, I would like Paul to just tell us, just in brief, what this nutrient-loading mechanism is, so at least we know.
Okay.
Then conclude.
Sure. As I said earlier, I was going to speak as a resident, which I have been speaking, but now let me speak as a conservation commissioner. In our last meeting on May 26, we had a presentation by Glenn Harrington, and that presentation is called "A Coordinated Approach to Reducing Nutrient Loading." The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health, and indeed the Conservation Commission, are looking for the town of Mashpee to be declared a nutrient, I guess in terms of the state, a nitrogen-sensitive area, the entire town. Because when I look around this town and I see the data, I see the house report, the water study report, there's no longer any question of what's going on here. We haven't had good water in 20 years. If we were to look at 310 CMR 1500, that's the Title V Code, there is a provision in that code under 310 CMR 15.215. And that provision does address nitrogen-sensitive areas. It, you don't have to look around much in this town to see that this is where we should be going. And then we can start considering those parts of Mashpee that are extremely close to the water sources but aren't going to get sewer-ing. They're not going to get in phase one, phase two, phase three. They might get it phase four. I won't live long enough to see it. Many of you in this room won't either. This is a long process and an expensive process. I know the bridges are already doubled and they haven't even started.
They've decided, yeah.
So it's, it's going to get crazy. I filled my truck today. It was $100 to put gasoline in my truck. When you start to see the cost overrides and the red tape and the approval that these wastewater systems are going to mandate, it's going to be tough. And it's not all doom and gloom. I'm thrilled that we are where we are. This is the dawn of an era for this town where the water will start to clean up. And eelgrass will come back and things will be better. But again, it's a hard thing to abbreviate. I made a motion at the Conservation Commission to request from the Board of Selectmen an open agenda item, an agenda item that doesn't go away. It sits there, much like the Redbrook Culvert on our conservation agenda. It sits there until that issue is resolved. That's the way we deal with things in conservation. I have not heard back yet from the Board of Selectmen. I'm anticipating that that agenda item will be up. I would like to envision it as being much like the agenda item that you mentioned earlier, Mary. We'd have one before the holidays, and we were to come back together and start to address things as a group of boards, and we just haven't got to that point. This, this just can't stop. We can't drop the ball. We have to keep addressing the issue. We have tons of mitigation in place. Conservation has a nitrogen-loading bylaw for lawns. Our Regulation 30 has been rescinded. That was rescinded back in April, I think it was April 27 of 2017. But right now, I'm part of the Bylaw Revision Committee for Conservation, and we are looking at Regulation 30 to bring it back. That's a nitrogen-loading regulation that would be very specific, at least for wetlands, where we would be able to say to people, no, we're not going down a Title V road. We want an IA system in. Title V does nothing, absolutely nothing, for the problem that we are in right now. You get 46 milligrams per liter of nitrogen coming out of that Title V system, and it's only four feet, in some cases, five feet above groundwater. You've got a major issue going on. I was leaving the house tonight, and what was on the television? The brand-new report from the Boston Authority on climate change for the city of Boston and the suburbs. They're talking sea rise levels of five feet.
Oh, here are 10 feet.
Well, that's not our problem. I'll tell you what our problem is. As the sea rise level comes up, so does the groundwater. And it's not on a one-to-one ratio. In some areas, sea level could go up one foot, groundwater could go five, groundwater could go an inch. But when that groundwater comes up, and our septic systems that are not going to be addressed with phase one or two, A, B, C, D, E, we got a major catastrophe going on. So we have to, really, we all have to buckle down. And I don't care whether you're for it, you're against it, you're pro-development, you're anti-development. We have to live here. And this is a community that we're going to leave to our family. I'm not from this community. I am now. I enjoy being here. I love working for the town. I love working for the commission. Please, put it on an agenda item. I'd be happy to come back and-
So do you want it listed as nitrogen-sensitive area?
Yes.
In consideration of-
My motion was to get that discussion going with the Board of Selectmen and/or the Board of Health. Those are the two agencies that are empowered to declare the town of Mashpee a nitrogen-sensitive area. It's not an easy thing to do. It's going to take a lot of work, but it's, it's a process that I firmly believe needs to be done.
So I'd love to learn, I'd love us to learn more. Is there some material you can give to our town planner for our meeting packet for next time?
Yes. I can, I can provide plenty of information.
And we'll put that under this, this item in two weeks.
Can I ask Paul something?
Yeah.
How come you're not talking about phosphate, you know, just nitrogen? I always wondered about that, because we talk about the whole thing at once, because I don't want to see 10 years now, all the lakes again, because it's-
Sure, sure. The technology's advancing very, very quickly. If you were talking innovative and alternative septic system 10 years ago, people would laugh at you. They just didn't work. Well, they are starting to work, but primarily they look at nitrogen outflows. They don't look at phosphorus. I like to look at nutrient loading rather than nitrogen loading, because the phosphorus on the freshwater bodies is the enemy. The nitrogen on the saltwater bodies is the enemy. But we have to address it as best we can. And we have to use the guidelines and the laws that are in place as best we can. And right now, that's 310 CMR 15.251.
And another thing is medicine. There's a lot of medicine in the groundwater from people taking, you know, going to bathroom.
There's a lot of everything in the groundwater these days.
But that could be really bad. I mean-
Absolutely.
You know, you don't know what you're drinking. It could be something to kill you, you know?
Sure, sure. Just open up the cabinet underneath your sink and look at that array of chemicals that's sitting there, and they're all finding their way at one point or another into the drains. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Any other comment from the public on this? From board members? Oh, hi, Rob. Go ahead.
I totally support everything he's saying. Where does this, Massachusetts for some time has had a green initiative. Where does this integrate in with towns trying to get certification as a green community, when nitrogen, phosphorus, and other activities-
I think green community is energy, right?
There's many criteria that go into certifying green communities. For the most part, primarily you're looking at carbon footprints and energy consumption, solar applications. But I, I would certainly dare to put into the mix wastewater. It's, it's a major issue. I mean, the town of Falmouth has at least been doing some sewer-ing. Of course, now they're realizing that their effluent is, you know, just so much of it coming out. They're looking at a pipeline now that they can throw out into the sound to get rid of their effluent. There's no easy answers.
No.
There's not. You know, people pollute. By nature, we all do that. And Mashpee's unique because, as Evan made mention, our population swells from 15,000 some odd and doubles overnight, and we are in the overnight season, you know, where it figures now of, I think you mentioned, Evan, 38 and some change.
36-ish thousand.
36. So it's, it's a tough-
One other question, Paul. The state's got a lot of money from the, all the, from the virus and stuff. Can we get all the towns together and try to get some of that money for the sewers? Like, if you have a squeaky wheel, yes, the Greeks, so we have 15 towns going out to Baker and say, you gotta give us, we're a dive straight, you got all this money. They don't even know how they're gonna spend it.
Right.
Let's give them some ideas, give us, help us with the sewer.
Funding has really never been my forte, so to speak. You know, my, my area is strictly the environment and the data that goes with it. Evan could probably address that better or, you know, perhaps some other departments here in town. I don't know what the funding initiatives are. I've spent my last six years just learning the town and trying to figure out the players and who everybody is. I just, I don't have that information. I'm sorry.
I think there was something in the newsletter from the Association to Preserve Cape Cod today.
Okay.
I'll, I'll forward it to Evan, and Evan can send it out. I really think there was, I think it's in the budget.
Oh, good.
That the Cape Cod, forgive me, Andrew, Water Collaborative, I don't know what, what it is. It's some regional entity that funds sewer-ing is gonna get a ton of money from the state.
Good.
Excuse me, Ann?
I think it's 200 million.
200 million?
Oh, my God.
Not enough, but anyway.
That's a start, though, I mean.
It's no interest, Rob.
One last thing. If, if the agenda item is on the June 6 meeting for the Select Board, if your board would like to appoint or have somebody volunteer as a representative to at least be there, you may have some questioning to ask them or the Board of Health.
I think we have to meet first officially on the agenda item.
Oh, okay.
I am, everybody's invited to go on June 6 for the Board of Selectmen meeting, but to have anything official, we have to have it as an agenda item and discuss it. So we might miss that 6th.
Okay, great.
But thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next item, affordable housing, affordable and workforce housing. So, you know, this is also a priority issue, so I'm just, would like to have it on the agenda every meeting and hear from everybody, you know, what their thoughts on that kind of stuff. I know that there's an initiative to ramp up the production of ADUs, accessory dwelling units in our, our community. I also, you know, had this thought, and I've shared it with Evan, that, you know, maybe we could look at a redevelopment bylaw that would target older, underused properties, whether they're residential or commercial, and give them an incentive via a bylaw of height and density with a strong affordable housing component. So I asked Evan to start a short list of properties that he thinks would benefit or be incentivized by that.
That was good.
So things like that. You know me, I want inclusionary zoning. So that will probably be right there on the list. Any public comment on that? Okay. Next is old business, floodplain bylaw amendments.
You're gonna have a draft from me for the floodplain bylaw amendments that we are gonna need to consider on our, on the 15th agenda. I didn't get to it for this one. The deadline for submissions to the Select Board for October is July 11.
Okay.
So we'll have two meetings prior to that deadline.
Okay.
But it is a priority. I have not even had an opportunity to put pen to paper yet. But at times of the essence, so I will look forward to getting you a draft for the, for the 15th in your packets for that.
And I know you gave it to us before, but can you give us the comments from, was it the Cape Cod Commission?
From the, it's from the county. It's not the commission.
Oh, sorry.
It's Position at the County.
Yeah.
Who's the Community Rating System Coordinator. I can do that.
Okay. That, that would be great. So any comments about that from the public? Okay, Chairman's Report. So, let's see. Last week, I had a meeting with Town Manager Rodney Collins, and Karen came with me. And then I had a Zoom meeting with Town Planner Evan Lair, just to kind of go over a little bit about the LCP, catching myself up on that, and staff's role on that, and our consultants, how we interact with our consultants. I want to let Dennis know that if we want help from our engineer, all we have to do is ask.
All right.
All right. We have to give him some notice so that everybody gets here. But let's say there's a part of the LCP that maybe we want Ed Pesci, our engineer, to look at.
Opinion, yeah.
You know, you know, we just have to get it pre-approved by Rodney, but his P and his professional and technical line item has a little bit of room for us.
All right.
So that was one thing that came out.
You really realize I must be Miss Jolly.
Yeah. Just one point, if I may.
Yeah.
Starting FY 2023, that line item in our- Starting FY 2023, that line item in our budget is funded as well. So for the, for those odd moments where Ed needs to be here, we have the money to pay him.
Right.
Outside of what we're collecting by our application fees.
That's great, because sometimes we, remember, we had a conflict with something in the neighborhood, and we sent Charlie out. We paid for him to go out and look at it and give the neighbors and the developers some suggestions to resolve the conflict. This is a wild act, but that's really good, to have access to him. And the other thing is, at, at last week's plan, Select Board meeting, under public comment, I encouraged all residents to participate in our upcoming workshops on the LCP, Saturday, June 11th at 10:00 a.m. and Saturday, July 23rd at 10:00 a.m., all at the library. So that's my report. Town Planner report.
Same update as the last meeting. I'm meeting with the neighborhood on, and Papa Nessa, to discuss these issues that I've elaborated on before in mid-June, and will report back to the board after we've had an opportunity to, to discuss them. It's a challenging issue. I don't even have a potential solution on the table, but really, the first step is to identify the issues with the neighborhood so we can communicate potential solutions clearly to you and also to the Board of Appeals, who's generally the permanent granting authority for projects impacting the neighborhood.
Gonna do a survey?
I don't know.
[laughing]
I don't know. Not planned yet.
All right. Board member committee reports. Cape Cod Commission, no report. Community Preservation Committee, no report. Design Review?
No report.
Plan Review?
Did not meet.
Environmental Oversight Committee?
No report.
Historic District?
No report.
Military Civilian Advisory Council? I think we can take that off, though. Yeah. Okay. And now we're having, now it's general comment. Paul Rifkin.
May I ask, I'm deaf, so I didn't hear what the policy was in the beginning for the new policy on public comment. What my public comment is about has absolutely nothing to do with anything that you folks have discussed tonight. Is that still an appropriate public comment?
Yeah.
As long as it falls under the jurisdiction, as long as it falls under the jurisdiction of the Planning Board. So is it, does it have to do with Planning Board matters?
I wanted to-
Paul, you gotta get to the mic.
I wanted to be a Planning Board matter.
Yes, yes. Come to the mic.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to say something here that's a little bit different than what's been going on. My name is Paul Rifkin. I live here in Mashpee. And I'm, I'm here to speak to you tonight because I believe words matter, and I want, I want the, that fact to matter to the Planning Board. We live here in a vibrant community and have much to cherish about our town. The spirit of the Mashpee community and the will of its people to work together is what has brought us great success. Hopefully, this spirit to work together will continue and help us progress into the future. Recently, though, I have been dispirited. I have heard and/or read words used by people in this community that greatly concern me. In fact, I find them to be contrary to the ideas of fairness and the continuity of the concept of community itself. I would point to statements aimed at a particular person stating that they go back to Yeshiva. In addition, another statement referred to a member of our community as a czar, including the fact that the last czar of Russia was executed. As a person of Jewish descent, especially when I was in the United States military, I have experienced antisemitism. These obvious dog whistles and this clearly antisemitic language offends me deeply. These words are unacceptable and move us backward, not forward. These words are also a roadblock to the community progress we hope to achieve in Mashpee. That is why they must be called out. If we allow such palpable threats to be expressed without standing up to them, in the least case, our community spirit will be denigrated. And in the worst case, these threats could result in actual physical violence here in Mashpee. We have seen this across the country. I ask this board to condemn any and all words that demean any group of people and make clear your intention to promote a community that values the contributions of every person instead. Might I share a quote from Bertrand Russell, a well-respected British philosopher? When he was 80 years old, he was, he was asked to give a message that he would like to deliver to future generations. He said, "If we are to live together and not die together, we must learn a kind of charity and a kind of tolerance, which is absolutely vital to the continuation of human life on this planet." I recently celebrated 80th birthday myself. In closing, might I suggest that I hope we will be, that we will be an example of this kind of charity and tolerance here in Mashpee. Thank you so much-
Thank you.
-for putting up with me.
Well said.
Thank you, Paul.
Very welcome. We have three other people signed up for public comment. Lynn Barbie?
Hi, Lynn Barbie. Surf Drive. Two very quick comments. One is, I have the LCP flyer that can be posted in some of your residential bulletin boards, whether it's Stratford or Southport or Papa Nessa. So I would like to pass them out to you all so that you can post them, and maybe there's one in your neighborhood too, Dennis. Please post them in your bulletin boards, because I don't have keys to your bulletin boards. And we're, I'm trying to get them all around out there. I've dropped them off, I've dropped them off at the Christ the King Church-
I could have three.
-and all of the other local churches, but we need to get them out there. So please put them in any bulletin board that you see. And the only other thing I have to say, which is officially out of order, but June 12th, Amity Day, we all should come. It's going to be a really wonderful event. Since Jay Marie is not here, I'm doing this on her behalf. Please come to Amity Day on June 12th, and please go to the library and see that incredible exhibit that our students have done of, of immigrant families in our community. Thank you.
Okay, great. Marge Hect?
I've already given my comment.
And Paul Colombo? Are you all set? Okay, great. So there's listed correspondence on our agenda. I don't have any additional topics that I'm aware of that need to be put on the agenda. So-
I make a most we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.